My name is Steel O'Connor, and this is our family ranch.
Shut!
It was started back in the 1870s by my great-great-great-great-grandfather, Thomas O'Connor. The man on the horse is Kai Booker. He started working here when he wasn't much older than me. Mr. Kai and my grandmother have run the ranch since I was a baby, after my uncle passed away. I've known him all my life. To me, he's a friend, a teacher, and part of the family. Us grandkids will someday be running things, but not till Mr. Kai and my grandmother say we're ready.
Grab a bag of corn, and let's get this barrel filled up.
The guy in the brown shirt is my brother Miles.
They nearly got all of it last night.
Christian is carrying the corn, and that's me in the white cap.
Miles, let's get that unwrapped.
Owens is in the building, should be in just a few minutes.
We always have a list of jobs to do. Right now, we're putting out bait for the feral hogs.
Member Hernandez is out of town and is not going to be making it back tonight, according to his text message.
It'll take them a few days to get used to it.
The barrel is Mr. Kai's own invention.
They're really helpful, because all they do is stay here, and keeps them busy while we just sneak up.
With that, we'll move to citizens' comments. Are there any at this time? None, so we'll move to new business, consideration, possible action.
See, they'll come and knock it down, and then they'll start rooting it, and see it just drop that corn.
Mayor Proten, would you put that on the table, please?
With those holes, they'll get a little tree, fifteen to twenty kernels every time they roll it around.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action resolution R 2023-105, so moved.
He tries-
Okay. We have a motion.
Second.
Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. This item is for the acceptance of the city's annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year '22, and the accompanying independent audit presented by Forvis. We're going to kick tonight off with a presentation by our finance staff, Amy Buckert, as well as Kendra. And they're going to kind of do what we did a couple of weeks ago when we did our primer on budget, and just kind of run through the background on why we do comprehensive annual financial reports, and the ins and outs of that, and then we'll hand it over to four of us to actually present the audit itself to you. As we have not received a final draft or a final act for at this point, we weren't able to share that with the council up to this point, but we do want to run through the presentations last night. And then if council deems it appropriate, we don't necessarily have to take action until we can get you that final report, and we can put it back on for next week. But with that, I'll hand it over to Amy and her team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epperson. So I wanted to go over just a few things, basic kind of audit 101. We have some new faces with us this year. First of all, the audit is required by state statute, and we're required to have an annual audit by an independent auditor each year. We're required to have our financial statements audited and receive an auditor's opinion on those statements. And then for fiscal year '22 audit, it's conducted by Forvis. They are formerly BKD, and we are in the third year of a three-year contract with them. They have issued an unmodified or clean opinion. So when you receive your audit book, you can go through, and you'll see the table of contents. Then there's an introductory section that's unaudited. The financial section contains the independent auditor's report, the management discussion and analysis, the basic financial statements, the notes to those financial statements, and the supplementary information that goes with those. And those are all the pieces that are audited by the auditors. And then you'll have a statistical section, which is also unaudited. So here we just have a brief overview of the statement of net position as of September 30. You might remember from our budget primer the other night, we talked about how things in the budget are classified a little bit differently than they are in the audit. This is where you'll see that from. So governmental activities are classified together, and those are primarily the government functions that run out of the general fund and those types of operations. And then you have the business-type activities, which are like the enterprise fund, the solid waste fund, and those types of activities. So you can see there our statement of net position, and the main numbers on this sheet that you want to look at for the non-accountants is the change in net position, and that shows basically where we ended the fiscal year. So this is our statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for all the governmental funds. So you can see up here that the governmental funds are the general fund, the debt service, capital projects, PEDC, TERRIS number two, the DAP, the Development Authority of Pearland, and a little bit of other miscellaneous funds. And then you can see the change in the net change in fund balance on each of those. So you can see where we began the year. The third lineup is where we began fiscal year '22. And then the second lineup, fund balance ending, is where we ended fiscal year '22. Can you give back one, Josh, real quick? I just want to point out the debt service fund, that's partially due to the tax stuff that we had going on a little bit. So that, and also the frozen home values that we experienced. And we changed our allocation for that last year. You might remember that we increased our allowance of what we're allowing for those frozen values, so that we don't face those shortfalls again. So this is the single audit portion, and this is Joel's portion. And we had some good news coming out of that this year, so I wanted to let Joel kind of go over the single audit for his piece, and explain that to you all.
Thank you, Amy. Real quick, just to clarify and provide information for the public and for council members that may be new and not familiar with some of this aspect. So the city receives both federal and state grants from a variety of sources. And in either case, federal regulations and state laws regarding uniform grant management standards require that we do a single audit separate from the act for that would apply to the use and expenditure of federal funds and/or state funds. And both of them share the same threshold. So if we spend more than $750,000 in federal funds, we've got to do what's on the single audit side, reporting through the schedule of expenditures for federal awards. And on the state side, if we do more than $750,000 there, a schedule of expenditures on the state awards. This year, we did not spend over that threshold in state money. But on the federal side, as you can see, we went well over that threshold and generally do, because we've got a lot of work associated with that. And some of the sources and types of funds are our HUD funding, of course, the money we get from Texas Water Development Board and TIDM that are pass-throughs from the EPA and FEMA, and of course, the ARPA and CARES Act funds that we received in the past through the Treasury, and anything we get from FEMA or Department of Justice, among others. And what happens is the auditors will get information from us as staff as far as what the expenditures look like, and determine what the major programs are. And those are the higher-spending programs are the ones that by audit standards have to be audited. And right now, we're in this culture of appropriation of CARES Act and ARPA funds, so that's going to be a requirement. And then the other major spending program was the drinking water state revolving fund program that we have for the surface water plan and the meter replacements. So those two were looked at very carefully. And we've got a Texas Parks and Wildlife concern on the state side, but we didn't go over that threshold and probably won't in one single year. So next year, we should have the same situation. But basically, we do have to do this every year, and they inspect for two things, of course. The financial statements that would monitor our compliance with the GASB regulations and/or standards. And then you've got compliance reviews that show how we comply, either with Chapter 783 on the state side, or 2 CFR Part 200 and the federal regulations on the federal side. And for this year, we don't have any findings, I believe, on the compliance side. So we've done a good job of maintaining compliance with federal and state rules when it comes to how we spend our grant awards. But there are some findings, I believe, go to the next slide, that we are going to see on the single audit pertaining to historical issues regarding capitalization and other things, but the auditors are going to talk about that. But overall, I think we've done a good job of looking at what happened in 2021, where it did produce some findings, and 2022, the corrective action took care of those. In 2021, if you recall, we had a large allocation of missing funds from HUD. And we took that issue straight to Washington, and were successful, and were able to recapture some of the expenditures that in the last audit showed up as not matching up with associated revenue. So we captured that money back and got things squared away. So but from my understanding, we will get an unqualified clean opinion where the single audit is concerned. And that's very good, because we share that not just through the clearinghouse, but directly to the sources of funds that we receive. Those entities all asked for us to submit that documentation, and it gives us a good foot to stand on when we go for other grants in the future. So that's basically all I wanted to cover. Any questions? We'll be available.
And Council, I just want to correct something I said earlier. I said that the debt service thing had to do with our tax rate situation. That was a misstatement. I'm currently today working in three different fiscal years, so I apologize for the confusion, but it is due to the tax freeze situation, those frozen values. The last thing I wanted to go over with you all is the GASB statement. So this is something new that was implemented in, or it was begun in 2017, but this was the first year we were required to implement it. And so this has to do with leases and how leases are accounted for by governments. And it's supposed to improve the accounting and the financial reporting by governments for those leases. And I gave you some detail in here in the slideshow, but basically, it requires lesses and lessors to report leases under a single model. And it's requiring the recognition of assets and liabilities that were previously classified as operating leases and recognized as inflows of resources or outflows of resources based on the payment provisions of the contract. So it's just to try and give us a little bit more transparency in government for the folks who understand that. If you have questions about the leases, we do actually have a number of leases with the city. So Kendra was kind enough to pull a few examples for me. The T-Mobile Water Tower lease is one. The Pearland Town Center office space rental for Tracy's function at the CVB is another one. And then we have some Parks Landscape Equipment in the Parks Department, and our copiers, our citywide copy contract, those are leases. So I just wanted to give you guys some examples of things that we use. There's a number of other ones here, and if you have questions about those, we can get into that. But that is something new that required a great deal of staff training and gearing up to get ready to do this. We've had a bunch of seminars and conferences and things that have tried to train us on how to account for these over the last couple of years, and so this was the first year you're seeing that in this audit. And then finally, I think I'm going to turn it over to Kendra to talk about kind of how we're going to move forward from here and what our plan for next year is.
Good evening. So we did indeed have two findings, which did require corrective action plans. Finding number 2022-001 was with capital assets. The city has currently implemented a policy on recording and reconciling of capital assets. This is when to recognize when capital assets need to be moved over on our books to be depreciated. And we will be training with all of our city personnel who do have responsibility over capital assets, and will continue to ensure that the proper recording and reconciliation of capital assets are placed into operations. We will indeed hold quarterly meetings with our city personnel to identify closed projects and those assets that do need to move over to be capitalized. Finding number 22-2022 is in our accrued revenues and liabilities. Again, the city has implemented a policy to, one, identify and to record accrued revenues and liabilities accurately. And we will indeed hold training with all city personnel with responsibilities over year-end closing procedures to ensure the proper recording and recognition of accrued revenues and liabilities. And we will conduct an internal pre-audit prior to the formal audit of the city. We will indeed document the process and for all year-end adjustments. And in both cases, our aim is to update our internal procedures to align with the principles of GASB and the best practices as recommended by the GFOA. I can indeed state that both of these were attributed highly to employee turnover. They were areas of opportunity that we did find, as we've had employees leave the city and new personnel come on.
So at this time, Council, if you'll allow me, we'll turn it over to Amanda Eves from Forvis to give the presentation on the audit.
Sounds good. Welcome, Amanda. You can give your name and address for the record. That way, we have that. Appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you. So my name is Amanda Eves. I'm an audit partner with Forvis, and a partner responsible for your audits. I'm happy to be with you here today. You mentioned my address. Do you need, I live in Seabrook, so okay, got it. What you have in front of you today is just a summary of our audit results. You also have in your packet, I believe, your annual comprehensive financial report that staff has discussed, as well as our required audit communication, which is a very lengthy document. So what I'm going to go through with you now is just a summary of that information. Happy to answer any questions or, you know, go into the detailed document as much as you would like. So just to kind of give you a picture of our audit timeline. So we began planning and interim work back in September of '22, and that really involved meeting with the city finance team, city management, doing our risk assessment for the audit as we do each year, and laying out our plan of completion for the audit. Again, that took place in September. And then we had year-end test work performed in December, December and January of '23. That is when we come in and we're testing all of your year-end balances based on the plan that we put forward back in September. And then we came back out this year in April, early April through May, to finish up those year-end test work procedures. The city also outsources the preparation of the act for to the CPA firm, so to Forvis. I want to make it clear that they are providing all of the information for that. We're just really pulling it into a document. They're providing it all and reviewing it all. As you can all see, it's a very large document, and the city has received unmodified opinions in the past and GFOA awards for financial reporting, so they really do a tremendous job in pulling that information together. So now our financial statement audit results. So as the team mentioned, we have completed our audit of your '22 financial statements. This slide is regarding the audit of your financial statements. So we are issuing unmodified or clean opinions on your financial statements. That is the highest level of assurance that your financial statements are properly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So the audit opinion that you would, you know, be striving for, also that you've received in the past. We did have some audit adjustments that we proposed to management during the audit. This is not an uncommon thing for us to identify audit adjustments as we go through an audit. And the city will look at those adjustments and decide, are they material? Do we need to book them, or are they not material? And we would like to basically pass on recording those. We had some recorded, and then also some past audit adjustments. And I do want to mention on those past audit adjustments, management passes on those. We review them and decide, you know, we agree as well with the city that those are not material. So those adjustments were not reflected in the financial statements. And in the detailed information that I mentioned earlier, you'll see a list of those past audit adjustments, and also a list of the adjustments that were recorded. As Amy mentioned earlier, you did implement a significant new accounting standard this year, GASB 87. All of these accounting standards that are coming out lately from GASB are feeling more and more significant as far as the time it takes, you know, for the team, the cities and clients, as well as auditors to go through and implement those. So the team did spend, your team did spend a good amount of time on that standard this year, but fully implemented it, and all of the new guidance is reflected in your financial statement. There was also another accounting change. So there was a restatement of beginning net position. This was in your solid waste fund, and it related to some unbilled accounts receivable at the end of the prior year. That was overstated, and so management went in and made that adjustment. And you'll see that fully disclosed in your financial statements, in the notes to your financial statements. So next, as a part of our audit, we are also required, as Joel had mentioned, it really gets included in with the single audit, but it's the report that's required by governmental auditing standards. And this is a report on internal control over financial reporting. And so also, as your team mentioned earlier, we had a couple of findings. One related to capital assets, and then another related to accrued revenues and liabilities. You'll see those findings detailed out in the single audit report. But again, your, you know, your team has put in place a corrective action plan, which is also included in the single audit report that Kendra spoke about a few minutes ago. And then your uniform guidance audit, this is your single audit where we're testing compliance with your federal programs, as Joel mentioned earlier. Your major federal programs were the drinking water state revolving fund, this is a federal program, and then also the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund. We are issuing unmodified or clean opinions on those programs.
There's a number of other ones here, and if you have questions about those, uh, we can get into that. But that is something new that required a great deal of, um, kind of staff training and, and gearing up to get ready to do this. We've had a bunch of seminars and conferences and things that have tried to train us on how to account for these over the last couple of years. And so this was the first year you're seeing that in this audit. And then, um, finally, I think I'm going to turn it over to Kendra to talk about kind of how we're going to move forward from here and what our plan for next year is.
Good evening. So we did indeed have two findings, um, which did require corrective action plans. Finding number 2022001 was with capital assets. The city has currently implemented a policy on recording, um, and reconciling of capital assets. This is when to recognize when capital assets need to be moved over, um, on our books to be depreciated. Um, we will be training with all of our city personnel who do have responsibility over capital assets and will continue to ensure that the proper recording and reconciliation of capital assets are placed into operations. Um, we will indeed hold quarterly meetings with our city personnel, um, to identify closed projects and those assets that do need to move over to be capitalized. Um, finding number 22022 dash zero zero two is in our accrued revenues and liabilities. Again, the city, city has implemented a policy to, one, identify and to record accrued revenues and liabilities accurately. And we will indeed hold training with all city personnel with responsibilities over year-end closing procedures to ensure the proper recording and recognition of accrued revenues and liabilities. And we will conduct an internal pre-audit prior to the formal audit of the city. We will indeed document the process and, uh, for all year-end adjustments. Um, and in both cases, our aim is to update our internal procedures to align, align with the principles of GASB and the best practices as recommended by the GFOA. Um, I can indeed state that both of these were attributed highly to employee turnover. Um, they were areas of opportunity that we did find, um, as we've had, have had employees leave the city and new personnel come, personnel come on.
So at this time, um, counsel, if you'll allow me, we'll turn it over to, um, Amanda Eves from Forvis to give the presentation on the audit.
Sounds good. Welcome, Amanda. You give your name and address for the record, that way we have that. Appreciate you being here tonight.
Uh, thank you. So my name is Amanda Eves. Um, I'm an audit partner with Forvis. Um, and, uh, the partner responsible for your audits, I'm happy to be with you here today. You mentioned my address. Do you need, I live in Seabrook, so, okay, got it. So what you have in front of you today is just a summary of our audit, um, results. You also have in your packet, I believe, the, um, your annual comprehensive financial report that staff has discussed, as well as our required audit communication, um, which is a very lengthy document. So what I'm going to go through with you now is just a summary of that information. Happy to answer any questions or, you know, go into the detailed document as much as you would like. Um, so just to kind of give you a picture of our audit timeline. So we began planning and interim work back in September of 22, um, and that really involved meeting with, um, the city finance team, city management, um, doing our risk assessment for the audit as we do each year, um, and, and laying out our plan of completion for the audit. Um, again, that took place in September. And then we had year-end test work performed in December, December and January of 23. Um, that is when we come in and we're testing all of your year-end balances based on the plan that we put forward, um, back in September. Um, we, and then we came back out this year in April, early April through May to finish up those year-end test work procedures. The city also outsources the preparation of the act for to, um, the CPA firm, so to Forvis. Um, I want to make it clear that they are providing all of the information for that. We're just really pulling it into a document. They're providing it all and reviewing it all. As you can all see, it's a very large document and the city has received unmodified opinions in the past and, um, GFOA, you know, awards for financial reporting. So they really do a tremendous job in, in pulling that information together. So now our financial statement audit results. So as the team mentioned, we have completed our audit, um, of your 22 financial statements. Um, this slide is regarding your, the audit of your financial statements. So we are issuing unmodified or clean opinions on your financial statements. That is the highest level of assurance that your financial statements are properly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So, uh, the audit opinion that you would, you know, be striving for, um, also that you've received in the past. We did have some audit adjustments that we proposed to management during the audit. This is not an uncommon thing for us to identify audit adjustments as we go through an audit. Um, and the city will look at those adjustments and decide, are they material? Do we need to book them or are they not material? And we would like to basically pass on recording those. We had some recorded and then also some past audit adjustments. Um, and I do want to mention on those past audit adjustments, management passes on those. We review them and decide, you know, we agree as well with the city that those are not material. So those adjustments were not reflected in the financial statements. And in the detailed information that I mentioned earlier, you'll see a list of those past audit adjustments and also a list of the adjustments that were recorded. Um, as Amy mentioned earlier, you did implement a significant new accounting standard this year, GASB 87. All of these accounting standards that are coming out lately from GASB are feeling more and more significant as far as the time it takes, you know, for the team, um, the cities and clients, um, as well as auditors to go through and implement those. So the team did spend, your team did spend a, a good amount of time on that standard this year, but fully implemented it and all of the new, uh, guidance is reflected in your financial statement. Um, there was also another accounting change. So there was a restatement of beginning net position. This was in your solid waste fund and it related to some unbilled accounts receivable at the end of the prior year. That was overstated. And so management, um, went in and made that adjustment and you'll see that fully disclosed in your financial statements and the notes to your financial statements. Um, so next, as a part of our audit, we are also required, as Joel had mentioned, um, it, it really gets included in with the single audit, but it's the report that's required by governmental auditing standards. And this is a report on internal control over financial reporting. And so also, as your team mentioned earlier, we had a couple of findings, um, one related to capital assets and then another related to accrued revenues and liabilities. You'll see those findings detailed out in the single audit report. But again, your, you know, your team has put in place a corrective action plan, which is also included in the single audit report, um, that Kendra talked, that spoke about a few minutes ago. And then you, your uniform guidance audit, this is your single audit where we're testing compliance with your federal programs, as Joel mentioned earlier. So your major federal programs were the drinking water state, a state revolving fund. This is a, a federal program. And then also the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund. Um, we are issuing unmodified or clean opinions on those, uh, programs. So, uh, basically we're going in and we're testing compliance for those programs with all of the material grant requirements. And we had no findings to report. And again, an unmodified or clean opinion on your compliance. And then lastly, I was just going to leave you with a, a couple of slides talking about the, um, accounting standard changes. So you're going to have a couple of more to implement this coming year in fiscal year 23. Um, one of them relates to public-private and public-public partnerships. That's GASB 94. So there will be some changes in how you report and even more so your disclosures around those type of arrangements going forward. And then the next one is, uh, GASB 96. And this is, um, this standard is pretty similar to GASB 87, the, the lease standard you just implemented, but it relates to subscription-based IT arrangements. Um, and so where you have these arrangements, you're going to be required to report, um, potentially some balance sheet activity, um, assets and liabilities on your financial statements related to those long-term, um, agreements for your, for your IT arrangements. And these are, um, standards the city is looking into to determine what effect it's going to have on your financial statements in 23 in order to get, you know, get ahead on implementing that before the end of the year. And that is, that is my summary of our audit. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
All right. Thank you, Amanda, for that. Uh, we'll open it up to, uh, questions, comments from counsel if you have any. Mayor Protim?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I don't know if there's a staff or, or audit. I know in the past we've, uh, we've had some public comments in terms of tying, tying out the government-wide financials back into the audited financials. Um, is that, how, have you seen that before? How, how do you reconcile that?
So the, there is a reconciliation page within that, that comes behind the fund level financial statements that reconciles directly up to the government-wide. Is that?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I think, Amy, you were here, you know, last time we had some public comments in, in terms of, of tying out within the, the AFRA or CAFRA, whatever we're calling it now itself. I guess, is there any way to, to head those issues off?
So you're asking about the public comment we received with regard to tying the act for and the budget together?
Yes.
And how we can better explain that?
Right. Is that going to be on the budget side or is that going to be on this side?
Um, I think that's an ongoing communication piece we need to kind of set, which is part of why I wanted to do like the budget primer and then also give a little background on this. Excuse me. We haven't typically done this in the last several years. And I think that just the more we can talk about it and the more we can, on both sides, the more we can talk about it and explain it, the better our residents are going to understand that. I kind of would like to do a, almost like a high-level explanatory piece and maybe put it on the website or something with a part of our, maybe our budget development module. We could do that as we go through the process and just explain those differences. Because we do see that a lot and I feel like we spend a fair amount of time explaining to residents how those are different and why they don't necessarily match. Um, but I will look, I will do some research and see if I can find something that maybe GFOA has that would help us kind of do a high-level education piece.
And that, or maybe as we lead off budget season, let's dig into it.
Keep talking about it. Yeah, I think that's the best thing to do. We can do that.
Thank you.
Audited year-end type of thing as you're starting, as you're starting up. It's a good, that's a good thought. It should tie back. We should be able to do that. Amanda, real quick, uh, page, uh, slide nine, real quick. Uh, and this is, you know, some of these new reporting things. Uh, do you, do you know what's kind of driving this? I mean, obviously leases and, and I get that. Are they, what's driving the changes here?
So, um, for this standard specifically, if you look at these agreements, they really are, um, very similar to leases and their commitments, you know, that the government has made for some long-term period. And so a lot of these standards, what you're seeing is those long-term commitments that typically in the private world would be reported on a balance sheet. Governments are now having to capture as well.
So like a subscription, I see that, you know, here, a, a subscription is very similar to a lease. It's got an annual payment to it and some three to five-year period of time.
Yes, yes.
Is it booked as an asset or is it booked as a, as an expense?
Um, it, as of now, it's booked as an expense, but it will be booked as an asset and then, potentially an asset and a deferred inflow of resources that'll be amortized.
So like a, a total million, five, and then over three years or five years or whatever?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Amy, real quick, uh, given these two, uh, new GASB requirements, uh, is that gonna, they seem to be pretty intense, right? I mean, there seems to be, there are a lot of leases that we have, specifically a lot of subscription agreements. As far as employee headcount goes and resources to be able to gather and capture all that and maintain it. Um, we also talked about earlier, I think you mentioned it, that we were going to have, uh, ongoing communications with projects, I think on a quarterly basis to continue to, um, uh, keep up with, uh, the asset realization of those projects. What's your outlook on keeping up with that from a resource standpoint?
Um, that's a good question. Uh, I think, so we've already started kind of just letting Dan and his group know that this is coming and we're going to be asking more questions about this. We're going to need to track it. So we have a meeting scheduled, I believe, in a couple of weeks to start those talks. So while finance staff is kind of getting trained up on the actual, uh, rules and regs, we'll be working with the departments to translate that information. Um, and then the capital projects item is something that, you know, we discussed before when we had this finding a couple of years ago. And there have been some difficulties just in, in kind of a constant communication. There've been issues a little bit with New World, um, and how, you know, how we can charge those projects and the, and close them out also. Um, so there's a number of things that we have to kind of work through. I think Dan can help us with some of the New World stuff. And then we just have to have a program and a, a plan in place that takes into account the turnover. You know, we have to have a plan that is turnover-proof almost, and that's what we didn't have before. We had a plan and we did it and as long as those people were in place, it worked. But when the folks started turning over and some of those jobs that, you know, maybe they didn't understand the ramifications or the why. So I think it's a, it's a part of our culture shift in finance that we're seeing. And so I, I think we can do it. I know we can do it, but it's, it is going to be a wholesale change to how we do business in the department and, and in the organization.
I, I understand the project piece. That makes sense. That, you know, that's been on your plate for a while. But these two new GASB, uh, requirements, those are both, uh, effective for 23 fiscal year, which, you know, as you know, we're in the middle of.
Yeah.
Right? So, uh, I think it's kind of a, you know, all hands on deck to kind of get that reconciled and.
It is. And we have, um, you know, staff-scheduled trainings for folks. Tanisha, who just came on as our controller, she went to GFOAT in the spring and, um, they attend seminars about it and get trainings and things. Um, our audit firms will also, you know, provide training on these types of items. So we just have to make sure that a number of folks are trained on that and, um, make sure that we're communicating it effectively to the department so they can start tracking that information in that manner, so that at the end it's not quite such a heavy lift.
With a backup.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Member Kamkar?
Can we go to 182 in the packet? I know it's a little bit off, but I, I had a question a little bit about our pensions. I guess I'm just very aware that we're, we're having to add services and we're adding more headcount. Just trying to get an understanding of just where the goalposts are with regards to that. So, um, just looking through the packet, um, I think we have a lot of data on it. Page 182 of the 300 something. I know that the, uh, presentation talked about assessing that pension liability a little bit. I'd just like to get a little more color and understand, I know, where are we? I don't deal with that professionally very much. So I know maybe member Barry has with, with the teachers and school board. Yes, this is great. Thank you. To our person, did you guys have an assessment of where we are with regards to pensions when you guys went through the audit? Was there anything untoward or anything abnormal or just?
So just one, one of the things that, you know, I would like to mention is, um, as I'm sure you're aware, um, for the, for your pension plan, TMRS, um, there are a number of actuarial assumptions that go into determining your, your net pension liability, which are, you know, all detailed out on, somewhat on this page, but also in the notes to your financial statements. So, um, it is important that you, you know, look at those, those assumptions to make sure, you know, that, that, um, you're in agreement with those. We, as a part of our audit, we do go through those assumptions. Um, we're not actuaries, but we look at the credentials of the actuaries. We look at the assumptions to make sure nothing looks unusual and out of line and make sure it agrees, you know, with what TMRS has provided as well. And, I mean, we, we found no issues or no problems in, in, in that.
And then on this item in the bottom, the pension liability as percentage. You could deal with more cities than we do. Is there kind of an ideal number? It looks like we have a very low number here in the, the lowest double digits and 20% or so. But is there an ideal number? I know bigger cities obviously have more staff, have more liabilities than we do. But as we start talking about hiring and as we go along in the next few years, um, is there like a general number or sweet spot where cities sit in that, so to speak?
You know, it, I would say it, it really varies. But what you're looking at is for that number to be either pretty steady or going down and not, not going up. So if you look at your trends there, I mean, sometimes there's going to be, you know, significant interest rate swings and things that could affect it. But if you look at your percentages there, it looks like you were at, maybe that's a 66% and then 42, 36, 20%. So it is trending down, which is a good sign.
Well, I just, as we start going through this more and more, I, I think we talk about our benefits package and how do we separate ourselves? So, um, just trying to understand it. But if you, if you didn't have any caution, that's a, I think a good sign.
No, did not.
Thank you.
And I think as, you know, obviously as we hire people and, you know, they, they pay into TMRS, I mean, we're paying into TMRS at the same time. So it's not an unnecessarily an unfunded liability. It's out there and we're funding it along the way, which certainly better than some of the other cities that don't fund it. So, uh, uh, much better to be in that position. Good to highlight it.
Any other questions, comments? Mayor Protim?
Mayor, since we still don't have the final report, I'm, I'll make a motion to postpone this till our regular council meeting.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion, a second to, uh, postpone. That way we can get the final and, uh, have it on next, hopefully next Monday night's agenda. Uh, that's not a debatable motion. All in favor? Madam Protim, uh, Madam Secretary, if you'll, uh, call for the vote on that, I'd appreciate it.
Mayor Protim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar? Member Hernandez? Sorry. Member Cade? Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens? Member Coza?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero to postpone.
All right. And with that, we're going to move, uh, item two to that same future agenda, uh, directly behind that. So with that, we'll move to adjournment at 8:38.